Good evening. Today is Tuesday. It's January 21st, and you can tell by the weather it's January. It is 6 o'clock, and this is a regular meeting for the City Council for the City of Trinidad. Will you all make sure that your cellphones are off, your hats are off, and that's it? Will you please stand for the mashup of the Project Agents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one on the agenda is roll call.
DeBono.
Here.
Schu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Trahill.
Here.
Ogletree.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Griego.
Here. Item number two is approval of the agenda. If you had time to look over the agenda, do we have any corrections or additions to the agenda? None? I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Schu moved. Second?
Second.
That's Ms. Ogletree. Call the vote, please.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Trahill.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Schu.
Yes.
DeBono.
Yes.
Did you say Griego?
She didn't.
No, Griego.
This is almost like you get into a rhythm and you just take it for granted. Item number three, policy items and steps.
Nothing tonight, anything.
Okay, no items under item three. Petitions or communications oral or written? Just to remind you, if it's oral communication, it is five-minute limit. Mr. Downs will give you a one-minute warning before your time is up, so you can conclude accordingly. Dan, or is Eddie Commons, is that remodeling? Yeah.
Good evening. Evening, Mayor Council. I just had some concerns about the remodeling job at the Commons Restaurant. I was here at the meeting that night, and I had to go back and watch it because when they talked about it, Trinidad Construction got bid for $88,000 for the remodeling. Also mentioned during the meeting, there was a hood for $92,000 for the oven. Well, another contractor asked me about it, so I requested the contract. Two weeks later, a contract was given to Trinidad Construction for $170,000 for the remodeling of the restaurant. Nothing was mentioned about the hood in there. It was mentioned that Trinidad Construction will supply all materials and labor for the job. So I really don't understand who wrote the contract or how that is, how council approves $88,000, and then two weeks later, a contract comes out for $178,000. The job was supposed to be done in 60 days. We all know that didn't happen. But along the way, there was five change orders made in the project, which came to a total of $22,000, added on top of the $170,000. I mean, I don't know what it is, if it's not transparency is what it is. I don't know. City staff is not telling council the truth or what's happening here. But it's not right to the public that they're coming for one bid for a job, Central Park, $1.2 million. The job's done. It's over $2 million. That's not being transparent. I'm sorry. It's just, it's not right to the public. I mean, you can't keep this happening with having the city manager spend over $100,000. I call Walsenburg. I call it Lahana. I call that Alamosa. It's just ridiculous. It should not be that high. Denver's not even that high for a city manager to spend that much money. I don't know who's pulling the wool over their eyes, or if everybody's pulling the wool over the citizens of Trinidad. But something needs to be done. People on the street are talking. You all know that. You said on social media, people are starting to get upset. People thank me for coming to these meetings. I know everybody here hates me. I don't care. I promise the people I do this, but this place has to be transparent in how they're spending the money. You, a couple of weeks ago, you approved $2.000 million to make last year's budget come out. Did anybody ask where that $2 million come? Who spent it and where'd it go? Not one of you asked where the $2 million bucks come. Go. Nobody did. Just say, okay, take $2 million. Let's make it a, make it right. Somebody's got to start asking questions. Last, but least, a couple of weeks ago, department head called me a liar up there, which, two weeks later, the city manager, I appreciate it. He found out I was telling the truth. He said I was telling the truth. What nobody knows here is, on his way back to his seat, the department head called me a lying sack of shit. I was told after the meeting, I filed the complaint. I received a letter from HR that, yes, it was true. He did say that on his way back to his seat. Got it?
Okay, thank you.
And that I can't be told what his reprimand was being because that's the city policy. But let me tell you something. When a person in City Hall does something, they have their own rules. They have their own laws here. You shouldn't really even call this place Trinidad. Call it Tombstone. Because they make up their own laws as they go. Thank you.
No written communication? Okay. Item five, council reception. So start to my, Mr. Williamson.
Mayor, I have no report. We do have a meeting Thursday for council.
Okay. Mr. Thurman?
Nothing to report from Park and Red.
Hi. So, this week, we met on Friday, and me and the mayor both attended the CML Legislative, and we brought the copies, if anybody's interested in looking at what's coming up in legislation. Also, was making some phone calls this week and kind of concerned about the unhoused situation. So I made a quick phone call to Walmart, and just out of curiosity, to see if they would be willing to make a donation. And graciously, store manager David Queen and Anna Jimenez organized together, and they were able to give us a donation of 100 blankets valuing over $1,000. So we will be gifting those to the Coalition for the Unhoused, and they'll be moving those through and actually getting those dispersed for our unhoused and their community members. So that was a wonderful donation, and I want to thank them truly. Also, I want to thank our utilities departments for, now that it was so cold, we stayed warm. Our water ran, and I am truly, truly appreciative of that. Thank you, guys, for working so hard behind the scenes.
Mr. Schu.
I know I don't everything this week.
Mr. DeBono.
Yes. Last Friday, many local veterans took advantage of the Veterans Administration that visited Walsenburg, Colorado. Many of the departments were there, like the Health Administration, the Benefits Administration, Cemetery, Educational and Vocational Vet Center, as well as Mental Health. A lot of the guest attendance were the American Legion, the Workforce Center, Spanish Peaks, Veteran Community Living Center, and other various agencies. And this was open to all the veterans and their families in Southern Colorado. It was sponsored by the State and County Veteran Service Officers. So it was great to have a lot of local veterans from here take advantage of the administration in its entirety. And that's it for last Friday. And then tomorrow, at Kangaroo Coffee, they're hosting a veteran's social from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. It's open for all the veterans and their guests and families. And you can get complimentary coffee and tea, whatever you prefer. And this is through the Veterans Council, so that's it for that.
Ms. Ogletree.
Hey. Arts and Culture met, and the work on the gloves for the baseball park is still in process. They are, have the sense that, I guess from conversations with staff, that there will be a budget for them to do some items that they would like to do. They'd like to get another RFP out for another handmade seating arrangement in a park. The raccoon thing has been real popular, so they're working on that and some other things. But they continue to work hard, even with some uncertainty. And then the Creative District, I've been attending the Creative District meetings mostly because I'm on the Advisory Council for Colorado Creative Industries, which oversees creative districts throughout the state, and so I just want to kind of keep tabs on them. But I want the public to know too, how, what a good job Veronica Mays is doing in getting it all in order, and everybody's starting to understand what it is that they're supposed to be doing. And they're going to have a retreat in February.
The Creative?
Yes. And they do need more members still in the Creative District.
Thank you. As Councilman Trahill mentioned, he and I were both listening to the CML Policy Committing Meeting. Trinidad has one vote, so we have to explain to CML that if I'm not there, Mr. Trahill is the second to vote on these. I think it'd be interesting if you all took a look at this. What happens is staff goes and investigates what is before the legislature for this session, and it just started. So there were a lot of items on here. A lot of them that are important for Trinidad, some not so much. But one of them, House Bill 25-1032, is authorizing local governments to form special districts regarding homelessness and for municipalities to actually have districts or designated areas for the homeless. So most of what staff, what the process is, for those that you haven't been through it, what they do is staff investigates and researches these House bills, and then they come to a conclusion. Should we oppose? Should we approve or wish to amend? So each lobbyist for CML comes before us and tells them why they want us, what they, why they recommend us to vote the way they do, we do. And they do a great synopsis. And almost every time they voted, we voted in accordance with what our lobbyists recommended. And one of them that I spoke out about is they want to repeal the 10-cent charge on paper bags. Paper bags. Yeah. I didn't realize that the state gets four cents and we get six, or it's vice versa. I can't remember. But I, they voted to oppose, and I agreed with them. You know, I think once we, it seems like the public's getting used to not wasting those bags. Keeps our community cleaner, so I voiced my opinion to not approve the appeal of that. And also, it would be, it would be, I would be amiss if I did not thank the Street and Bridge Department this weekend. They were out there almost 24 hours a day, every day, from when it started snowing on Saturday or Friday, Saturday. And I mean, I saw those guys out every, all night long through that. And it was a holiday weekend for them, and I know they get compensated for it. But the conditions these people had to work in over the weekend was pretty tough. And I just want to, Mr. Just, will you explain to them and give them my thank you from myself, and I'm sure council will agree, to thank them for the work they get over the weekend? It's, it, the streets look good, you know, taking into consideration what the storm was like this weekend, so thank you. Item number six is the Consent Agenda of Google. Six A is approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 7th, 2025, and special meeting minutes of January 13th, 2025. Approval of bills totaling $1,758,512.46. And approval of payroll from January 18th, 2025, through January 31st, 2025. I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Schu moved. Second?
Second.
Mr. DeBono seconded. Call the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes. Item seven, we have no unfinished business. Item eight, public hearings. Transfer of ownership of the tavern liquor license filed by Sancho's SVG LLC Doing Business says Sancho's Sports Bar and Grill at 516 East Elm Street, formerly known as Sexy Pizza Bar. I'm calling the hearing open. I also need a motion to continue this hearing to February 18th, 2025, as some of the principals involved were not able to attend.
So moved.
Ms. Ogletree? And Mr. Schu seconded. Call the vote, please.
Williamson?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes. Item nine A, under miscellaneous business. First reading of an ordinance repealing and reenacting 12-12 of Article 2 of Chapter 12 of the Code of the City of Trinidad for the purpose of adjusting the rates for electric service, power, and energy, and set it a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance on February 2025. I need someone to introduce.
Why did you say?
Mr. Schu introduces. I need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Trahill moved. Second?
Second.
Is that you, Mr. Williamson?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. I can't read and look at you, and write and look at you at the same time.
Hi.
Hi.
Sneak up on me.
Good evening. So we'll be up here for a little bit. As we provided for the past couple of months, we've been working with the Waterworth software and the information, our information as far as our capital improvements, infrastructure improvements, projects, O and M for each of the departments. We have inputted that into the Waterworth. They've taken everything, so you have all those reports. So we are coming before you now with the ordinance changes and increase to the utilities. This one in particular, you have the power. And as I mentioned in the past, for residential, we just went straight across. It's a 4% increase for residential, 7.5% for commercial. What that means for residential, the monthly charge, it's a 50 cent, 56 cent increase. The power or the kilowatt usage, it's, the increase or difference is .0058. So it's very minimal. The commercial side, it's $24. It's going to $25.80, so it's a difference of $1.80. The energy usage, there's a difference in the kilowatt usage of .0114. And then Electric has monthly charges, so we've got a summer rate and a winter rate. And so anything over the 1,500 kilowatt usage during the winter months, it's .0099.
If I could interject, Linda, I just wanted to let council know that what was published in the paper will be amended. And what you, what council has at their seating are these numbers that Linda is reporting, highlighted in red, are the changes to the rates. And then we've also added a new section that tracks with what Waterworth software was projecting out, where it lays out the rate increases yearly with what they're suggesting by, with the caveat that every year, the departments will come before you. They will look at the financial, see where this has got us to that, you know, along the track to fixing our infrastructure and staying above inflation. And so you'll be getting yearly reports. But it's laid out in the ordinance, the rates that were suggested by the Waterworth software.
So the highlighted area of all these ordinances is what you, the verbiage you were just speaking?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, Linda.
No, thank you.
Madam President, that's a quick, funny question.
Are you finished, Linda?
Yes, yes.
For the time being?
For the time being.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that you're saying, what you're saying, Mr. Valentine, is that Waterworth recommended that we have these increases every year, the same amount every year it's going to increase by. But at the end of each year, before the next budgetary year, we'll look at it and see if it's excessive or not enough, and make a decision then.
Correct.
It's not automatic.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. DeBono?
No.
Mr. Schu?
No.
Mr. Trahill?
No.
Real quick, when is the end of that winter quarter?
I don't have that, but I will get it. So the way that's broken down, it's just, I would imagine it's probably May 31st.
Okay.
Because the summer months are June through September. Winter months are October through May.
Gotcha.
Okay.
No questions?
I have no questions. That's good that we have that review gene there for review because if something were changed, that we could readjust these. Okay, then no other questions, comments, City Council? Okay, call the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes. Item nine B. Got a 10 of paperwork here, so bear with me. Nine B, reading of an ordinance amending the city's rates for sewer service and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance on February 4th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. I need someone to introduce the ordinance.
All introduce.
Councilman Ogletree introduced. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Williamson? And Mr. Schu seconded. Call the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes. Item nine?
Mayor, excuse me.
Yes.
Those votes are with the amendments that, in that, correct? I just want to make sure.
I'll make sure that I state that the next time we have that. Item nine C, first reading of an ordinance adjusting the City of Trinidad landfill rates and setting a hearing date for consideration of said amended ordinance on February 4th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. I need an intro?
All introduce.
Trahill? Motion?
So moved.
Mr. Schu seconded?
Second.
Mr. DeBono?
Mayor, if I may, I called Bob up for the landfill rates. We found some charges that we omitted in all that Bob laying up to date. But there is also the same statement in there in yellow, laying out the rates and yearly review of these rates.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Yeah, the one item that's not in the ordinance is the cost for e-waste. It's basically any electronic waste that they bring out there. We charge $1 a pound. The proposed rate would go to $1.25 per pound for electronic waste, TVs, computers, electronics. So I also put together, just to give you guys a kind of an idea of what the other landfills in the region are charging. Not every landfill provides the same service, but you can see, even with our recent rates, we're considerably lower than the other landfills.
Thank you.
So if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask.
Mr. Williamson, so we'll start over here.
Sir?
Mr. Just, currently I have no questions, but thank you for the comparison. I find that useful and enlightening, so thank you for that.
You bet.
Thanks for the comparison. That puts things into a nice perspective. Bar rates are kind of low compared to everybody else's. Thanks for that.
Just thank you for putting all this together. I did not know we took electronic waste. I was told we had electricity, so that's odd. So thank you for putting all this together for us. It's eye-opening, really honestly, as more likely the committee will see it as well.
No, no questions. Thanks, Bob.
Sure.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, I knew some of the other counties, two, three times the cost of, you know, some of the categorized compilation here, but it's a good breakdown. Yeah, thank you.
And we're the only one on your list that takes e-waste. Do we do anything with it?
No. I, the others were charging per, like, I couldn't find a comparable number. But for instance, like on TV sizes, they charge per diagonal inch, so we just charged by the pound.
Okay.
So, but yes, other, different ways. Like computers, like old computers were $10. They just, they didn't have a similar. So I just didn't put their number in there.
Do we sell that waste at all?
We turn around it. There's a company, it comes out of Denver, that comes down and they pick it up. So they charge us.
Precious metals that are in a lot of that waste, and so that's why they would be interested in it.
Yeah, they charge us to come down, they weigh it, and take it off.
Okay, thank you.
It's a kind of a pass-through with the company, and we make a little bit for handling, so this helps.
We do make a little bit?
Just for the handling that we, you know, we have to weigh. Just for, for the handling that we, you know, we have to weigh it, we have to charge, we have to bill, so it's.
But it doesn't cost us anything, per se. I mean, we know.
Just the manpower and the, yes, that's it.
I thought we did, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, this is interesting because there was an article in the Chronicle that claims that we've got high utility rates. I'd really like to counter that somewhere, somehow, cause I don't believe that's true. And Linda's creeping up on me.
I did a little bit of research on that, where the information came, so I was, I was actually working on that, um, before 5 o'clock, but, um, out of the Colorado cities that were represented, all of the Colorado cities, we're 62 of 67. Um, so we're like way down there and the counties, I think we're 34 out of 38. So, um, the article was a little bit misleading, um, and the website that I went, I went to that website and it looks like it's like a bill pay network that, so, um, I'm not quite sure, but we were looking at all of that and I know that the other, um, directors also have comparisons if you want, that we just didn't make the copies, but if that's something that you want to look at for each of the utilities, we're happy to provide that. We, we do have that.
Okay, if it's not too much trouble, but I'm more concerned about writing the wrong, with the wrong information and it really doesn't pertain to these ordinances specifically, but I don't want the people of Trinidad thinking we're increasing an already high charge for the utilities.
Yes.
So if we can somehow get the word out there that that is not true, I would appreciate it.
Um, I can make a, a phone call to, um, the reporter.
To news?
Mm-hmm. Um, apparently he had come in, I don't know if it was Thursday, and I was at a doctor's appointment that day, so.
Okay.
So I, I, I can reach out to him.
I just don't want citizens of this community thinking, thinking we're increasing the high.
Totally agree.
Oh, thank you.
We kind of agree with you more.
Okay, thank you. Call the vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Sting.
Um, Griege?
Yes. Item 9B, first reading, first reading, it's like I'm on the bed of every hill, first reading, first reading. Ordinance amending the city's water rate schedule and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance on February 4th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Um, I need someone to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce.
Mr. Williamson, is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Ogletree, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Schu? Oh, you're here still?
I'm still here.
Go for it.
Um, so again, just, um, as, as I presented, uh, water, we are looking at 3% for both residential and commercial across the board. So, um, it's, it's about 74 cents, um, on your smaller meters, um, as I mentioned, so it goes from about 74 cents to about $37.13. That's, that's an eight-inch meter that I'm quoting on that. And then outside the city limits, it's about a dollar 24 to $74.25. Again, that's an eight-inch meter as well.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree, do you have any questions?
I do not.
No, ma'am.
No.
None.
Is there, is there an, uh, commercial and residence combined or is that just?
No, each of the, water is billed, um, it's got different, uh, rate structures, so water residential, water residential outside the city limits, we've got commercial rates, but it's all based on meter size.
Okay.
Uh, no questions?
I have none.
And I'd like to add to, um, if, I know that you all get bombarded with customers or people calling, um, please, please tell them to call us or come in. We're happy to, to look at their bill, you know, we can tell them, okay, this is what it's gonna, this is what you're looking at. I know when you talk about percentage increases, it's, it's a little bit intimidating and it's, oh my gosh, it's an increase, but tell them to come in, we're happy to sit with them and we did, you know, we've done that one, one time before and we're happy to do that.
Yeah, we do. She was doing fine.
The only one thing I wanted to add is that it is, this ordinance excludes our water resale.
I'm sorry.
It excludes our water resale as far as, uh,
Okay.
the dispensing stations.
So.
They're already paying $16.50 per thousand gallons of water, where here in town, we pay $3.30 per thousand over the minimum and 650 or 60 per thousand gallons per active territorial. So our water dispensing stations, we charge them $16.50 per thousand, didn't feel the need to increase them at this point, cause they're already paying for quite a bit for water, so they're not included in this.
Yes. I, I did have a question about that. Do we set any limit on the amount of water that we sell?
What they charge? No.
So we'll sell any amount to them?
Pretty much, with the exception of their, the non-podable, we have to keep track of the augmentation as far as there, but this.
There are provisions in the contract for the water resellers, um, when they first came in and negotiated their contract, they, they give us an amount. They're, they're within range most of the time, but if, uh, in water, in drought and water shortage conditions, we look at them first.
So we can limit it?
Yes.
Yes.
We have to, we have, we have to track that.
And, and I will add to that, like, cause we've got the Valdez Water Station and then we've got the non-podable domain station here on Chestnut and I can monitor exactly how much water's coming out of there, so.
Okay.
And each of the other resale, they're of course privately owned, but.
Understood, thank you. I have a question for you, Linda.
Yes.
When you mentioned for somebody to call, city hall to ask about these rate increases, who do we specifically direct them to?
You can direct them to me.
Oh, you're brave.
You can direct them to me.
Okay.
And, um, I know the guys, uh, Steve, I know Porchar, cause we are next door to each other, but he's had customers come in, he's pulled the bill, he's sat down with them and said, this is what your gas, you know, this is how much it's going to change by, so, any, any one of them, we're happy to do that for.
Okay.
And I know our billing office gets a little bit bombarded, but I told them as well, send them upstairs to us.
Okay.
We're happy to help.
Thank you. Call the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Trell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
We have to wait, yeah.
You know, you're waiting, I just might add that, you know, in the times we're in, everything is going up, so the cost of operations, the cost of water valves, gas valves, piping, everything is increasing, we have to keep up with it to, to keep the infrastructure.
Understood.
Yeah.
We've been patiently waiting for you, Mr. DeBono. Not really patiently, but, just FYI, we're taking the vote on the water rate increase.
For sure.
Thurman?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes. Okay, Linda, you're still going to stay with us for one?
Yes.
Item 9B, first reading of an ordinance of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, increasing the gas delivery charge applicable to all customer service classifications and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance on February 4th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I need someone to introduce?
So moved.
Mr. DeBono introduced? I need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Schu, and I need a second?
Second.
Mr. Trell. Okay, Ms. Griege, you're on.
So for, um, gas, um, as we've said, there's three separate charges, meter billing charge, delivery charge, and gas supply charge. The only thing that is increasing is the delivery charge at 2 and 1/2% increase, so the, um, difference right now is .2154, it's increasing to .2208 per CCF, so the difference is .0054. Um, the delivery charge is, uh, used for our operation and maintenance and I know, uh, Steve was doing some calculations, did you want to add anything, Steve?
Yes.
Of, it's, it's certainly not a whole lot.
Could you, Mayor, council? Um, so I do have a comparison, I could get copies and get that to you of some other cities. Um, I get four different cities, three of them here in the Southern Colorado, one in Northern Colorado, approximately the same size and same gas consumption as Trinidad and as Fort Morgan. Um, they're also a city that owns all of their four utilities, so we are pretty equal with them. Their complete gas usage charge is going to be 65 cents, that's what there's a way increased to, when you add the supply charge and the dis, uh, delivery charge. Pueblo West is way considerably higher than ours. Their supply charge is 63 cents, ours is 43 cents. Their delivery charge is a dollar 14, ours is 22 cents, would be increasing to 22 cents. Uh, Pueblo, Colorado, they have a gas charge of a dollar one, they combine their delivery and their supply, so ours is 65, theirs is a dollar one. Walselburg, their supply charge is 50 cents, ours is 43 cents, their delivery charge is a 30, basically 31 cent, ours is going to be 22 cents. So that's the comparisons. How it will affect businesses and homes, uh, so January is our highest consumption month. For the average home, it'll look like an increase of about 98 cents in January, per month. Um, small business, probably about $5. Um, and we have large businesses, um, our biggest customer, um, we'll see about a hundred dollar increase in January per month. Of course, they're using a lot of gas, so that's what they'll be looking at, but for residential, it'll probably be a dollar a month during the winter months.
Ms. Ogletree?
I don't have any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve, for that, sure. No questions, Steve?
No, thank you so much.
No, no questions, Steve, thank you. Um, just out of curiosity, you'll email the comparison or?
Yeah, we'll get the comparison.
Okay, thank you. No questions.
So I have a question. So when you say the gas rates are changing 98 cents, so in, in the, like, the past two weeks, the weather that we've had, how would, just give me an idea of how much that rate increase would equal to in a time where we have sub-zero, it's.
So it's probably going to be pretty much the same. Usually every January, looking back for about the last five years, we've kind of stayed steady with what we've used. Now, different houses, it's hard to say because of the different factors that go into our house, whether it has good insulation, good windows, drafting.
Yeah.
Um, stuff like that, you know, energy efficient furnaces make a difference, so all that makes a difference. So what I did was I looked at, got all the residents and I kind of picked a middle place right there where the consumption was about 200 CCF a, a month and went off of that. So if you use a little bit more, like, these last few days, you might definitely use more, but then it might warm up two weeks from now and we don't use as much.
It'll average.
So bell averaging out, yeah, so. Um, it's hard to, hard to do a comparison with gas. And then another thing, it's hard to compare other cities, um, when you're doing comparisons because you have to look at if they are undercharging this year because they overcharged last year, or if they're overcharging because they undercharged last year.
And we don't do that?
So you have to dig deeper into the weeds to really get a true comparison.
I got it.
To other cities.
And we don't, we don't use that?
We do do that. That's a hundred, 1.2 million we wrote off.
Okay.
A few weeks ago. Now, if we wanted to collect that from the customers, we would increase our prices and I believe that's what Pueblo West is doing right now, why their delivery is a dollar 14. If you remember back in, I believe it was February of 2021, we had that extreme weather event where thankfully we had storage, it didn't affect us, but a lot of cities that didn't have storage had to pay the daily price because they went over the dedicated allowance of natural gas and they had to pay a daily price and they have to recover that somehow.
I see.
So, yeah, so that's where that, that's why it's hard to get a comparison of exactly what's going on.
When you talk about delivery charge, is it delivery charge per what?
CCF, 100 cubic feet. So we're charging 22 cents per 100 cubic feet of usage.
Okay. All righty.
Yeah, like Linda said, our delivery charge is for our operations and maintenance of the pipeline, that's what I go with, salaries and product that we buy and just to keep our, our pipeline operable and safe.
All righty.
Mayor, I'd like to kind of bring that home, what council did for the gas customers, that they forgave 1.2 million dollars, um, where based on, you know, the gas and everything, that the prices of gas were going and stayed steady and so that doesn't make the papers that you forgave 1.2 million dollars, but, uh, the other side does, so I just wanted to kind of pound that home.
Well, you know, Mr. Dow, I was going to call you Mr. Dow. You know, if Linda gets through to the paper, I think we need to put that in as well. I really do, because, you know, people don't understand, and people, I don't know, it, people don't have the opportunity and even if they do, they don't understand what kind of, the quality of our staff we have here at the city and I think it needs to be known to everybody, you know, all of you gentlemen sitting in and ladies sitting in the back room, you know, you all do a very excellent job.
Would you like us to write a letter? Is that, you know, rather than just getting a retraction, Mayor, I'm sorry for interrupting, but writing a letter?
I, I think it needs to be known.
Okay.
I mean, there's so much misinformation out there.
Right.
You know, I think maybe we should and.
And of course, so many people read the retraction when the guy who wrote the article says, oh, right, so a letter may be better, and that's just what I'm hearing. I could have waited until my report, I'm sorry.
I know, you're very anxious.
Yeah, yeah, I've been quiet so long.
Yes, you have.
Yeah.
It can be so hard, Sarah.
I do, I do.
All right, okay, anything else?
I, I just want to say, I, I agree with you, I think we should, and I just want to thank the staff and the city manager, intern city manager, for leading us through this process because I don't think, I think there were probably years that Trinidad did not do things like this, like figure out, how are we going to afford when we have to replace all of this equipment when it breaks down? And now we're doing it, which means we have a future and I really appreciate that.
And all that, that, I just came in interim, the staff has been all.
Well, let's stop that, you're doing it.
We're moving on to the staff.
Okay, and I appreciate our intern staff as well. Okay, I need, uh, call the vote?
Thurman?
Yes.
Trell?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, I appreciate it. Item, if authorized issuance of a letter of support on behalf of, of the housing authority, a letter of support for property tax exemption and a letter of intent for project-based vouchers for the Mark apartment affordable housing.
Good morning.
Good evening, council, mayor. Um, so if you remember, we saw this project come through, uh, last January, actually, we did a rezone, um, unfortunately the project didn't, didn't get funded, um, but we're happy to have, uh, Mr. Goldsman and Commonwealth to come back and, you know, to reapply and, uh, the city's helping him as best we can to, to get everything in, in order for his complex between North Avenue and Camillus, um, seventeen-two-bedroom, seventeen-three-bedroom, and, uh, six single-bed, um, units. That's actually the, the six single-bed units are in addition, it's only changed from last year. Um, that was with conversations from, with developer, with CHAFA and with city staff, actually with CHAFA, just, uh, that was one of the feedbacks when they didn't get funded last year. So they added the one-bedroom apartments. The development seeking a nine-percent low-income housing tax credit from CHAFA, uh, it targets thirty to sixty percent AMI, has a thirty-year deed restriction associated with it. In the city, last year, we awarded, uh, Housing Now funds for tap fee deferrals, uh, to the project as well that are still, uh, still active, still good right now. Last year, we rezoned, like I said, and then this year, planning commission approved a site plan review, um, that was actually last Tuesday, January fourteenth. And then with no active housing board, authority board, uh, developer and staff requesting, uh, for approval through city council, uh, of the three letters from Housing Authority last year, um, and if with approval, we'll have the executive director of the Housing Authority, uh, sign them. These three letters are partnership for property tax exemption, um, a general, general letter of support and, uh, need, explains the need in Trinidad for a project like this, um, an attempt to provide project of eight project-based voucher units, um, and then as well as the one from city council itself, so, uh, as before, letter of support in total. Last year, we had all four of them submitted, um, and all four of them, again, crucial for the project's submittal and, um, hopefully, hopefully funding, so. Mr. Goldsman's here, if you have any questions, or I can ask any questions?
Mr. Williamson, do you have any questions?
I have no questions from the library.
No questions. I don't have any questions, just thank you for not giving up on us and
Yeah.
been made aware that the county has already pledged their support as well, so, which is like.
Yeah, no questions.
Yeah. No, ma'am.
Are we hopeful that this year it's going to go through?
Oh, yeah, come on. Yeah, I can speak to that. You know, I think we are, I mean, our, we did a deep dive kind of analysis on all the awards dating back the last five years, and CHAFA's unique in that, you know, it is kind of they decide who, who gets picked and it's not truly by like point prescription, um, and so our analysis, like, on average, it takes one-point-nine-two submittals to get an award, so effectively two. We recently got funded in Colorado Springs for our, our project, we've been there, and that was our second time, so that kind of the model came true. So we're hopeful this time, I mean, again, we've, we've talked with CHAFA, you know, city representatives have talked to CHAFA, we had the six one-bedters, which was a big, you know, you listen to their comments and you try to address as many as possible, and I think we kind of hit everything that kind of asked for, um, back again, so we're, we're very hopeful that, you know, this should be, you know, the time, um, clearly anything can happen, there's no promises, even if you've done everything they said, you know, who knows what other projects, you know, they may deem more worthy or whatever, you know, they want to call, but, yeah, I mean, I, we feel pretty confident, but, I mean, it's kind of what you got to be, if you're eternally pessimistic, you know, we're going to, this will beat you down pretty good.
That's true. Thank you very much for not giving up, I, we really do need some.
You guys make these when you don't give up on us, so I appreciate it.
Mr. DeBol, do you have any questions?
No, no. No, no questions.
None.
Uh, I have no questions, just coincidentally, I was over at the Housing Authority today and I was talking to Mrs., Ms. Fields, and she's really excited about this project too, so, uh, Mr. Mason described it, uh, you're looking at the Housing Authority Board right here, and we have to take, uh, leadership when there is no, no housing board, uh, seated, so we're doing the work of the Housing Authority Board at this point. Call the vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes. Item G, consideration of a letter of support for the Mark apartment affordable housing. Who's presenting that, or anybody from Steph?
So this one, this is just a letter of support from council itself, um, just because last year, like I said, we, we put, we did that, um, injunction with our approvals that we did last year, so, um, yeah, this is just from council.
Okay.
And it's authorizing me to sign it?
That's what it says.
Yeah.
Or you let the mayor decide, you make that change?
Um, I'll, I'll make, oh, yeah, I'll have the mayor sign, and then there's a, there's a separate one, yeah.
Yes, in terms of city manager.
Yeah, I'll have the mayor sign.
Just print an extra, one more.
Any questions, comments from council? Call the vote, please.
Need a motion.
Motion.
Oh, I need, yeah.
We need a motion.
So moved.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I lost, I lost track in the excitement of the minute here. Ogletree, motion, she seconded? Is that correct? Call the vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes. Item ten, reports by city manager and city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing to report this week unless there are questions.
Wow.
Uh-oh.
I'm hoping you could give us some kind of input on what's going on, again, with the emergent campus, are, have we been able to come to any conclusions?
No, we've, uh, we've been hit and miss with scheduling, um, the next time to meet is tomorrow, if we can all get together, and, and so it's, uh, I hate to say it, but it's moving forward at the government pace, sorry. So, but we're trying to meet up so we can consolidate, we, uh, are looking to put the emergent campus link on our webpage, so at least, uh, anybody inquiring, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. You know, I, something, I just came to, how do we umbrella, if we're going to do the umbrella, our insurance with the emergent campus? Or how do we do that?
Those are some of the details that we'll have to, we're working through with them. I'm not sure where insurance would come into play, but.
If they're representing or?
Right.
Maybe we should contact someone and see what they.
Look into it.
Something to think about, like, what discussion?
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Okay, Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, just a couple of things, if I could, please. The first one, I will let you know, especially because you were acting as the Trinidad Housing Authority, um, this evening, council will be conducting the interviews of the applicants for the vacancies for the Trinidad Housing Authority on Monday, at the work session, yes, this coming Monday work session.
The twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just want to let you know that, and then, um, the decision-making will occur at the meeting on February fourth, but the interviews will be taking place this coming Monday.
And then also, just. I mention this every time, but we'll be able to do that in like a moderated forum manner with a single person asking the question?
Yes, yes, sir, I think you have, like you said.
I saw them verified.
Sure, and, and I think that's okay with all of council, I think they have indicated that it's okay with them. I also want to let you know, because I haven't updated you in a while, on the litigation that I filed on the city's behalf, on the declaring a nuisance, uh, for the university property, I want to let you know that currently is being, we're having to do, um, service by publication, because there was no one really to serve regarding that, we have to, um, publish for five weeks, we have been doing that in the Werfenel world, so you know. A lot of reasons why we do that, it's okay, uh, it's, it's perfectly acceptable with the, uh, the courthouse, if we do that in the Werfenel world rather than the Chronicle News, we're on week three of five, and then we can, we will file the proof of publication after five weeks, and then the case can proceed, and try to get that property declared a nuisance legally, and I will let you know, and also, we will, uh, be working on a letter of the Chronicle News, letter of correction on the, on the utilities and that article.
Who, what? Who would be the individual or individuals that sign the letter? Would all of us, or we don't need to sign it, or?
You could, sure, or like, Mike could, you know, um, you know, any combination thereof, it's, it's probably easier for, for staff to do it, Mike and I could, Mike and utility people, I mean, we could have all the, you know, utility directors sign it as well, uh, along with Mike, but, but I, I really hadn't thought about that.
I personally trust Steph to do what you feel is best, and Linda's at the helm, so we're.
Exactly, so we have adult supervision.
That's it?
That's it, yes, ma'am, thank you.
I, I forgot one thing on my council report, if you don't mind, on the twenty-eighth, which is next Tuesday, good for today, we were, uh, some council people and Clay Mason and Jen Lee and Chelsea, who is the unhoused coordinator, are going to go look at Saint Benedict's, and we're going to talk to people in the Alamosa area to get a true indication if this, if this works or if it doesn't, because there's a couple of people that want to talk to us as well regarding, uh, homeless in camp, so, that's it, I apologize for.
That's on the twenty-eighth.
On the twenty-eighth. Will you still be around?
Yeah.
Okay. We, I've already.
It's been, it's been.
It's been on the website. All right. Item eleven, motion to adjourn. Mr. Shu?
Second.
Mr. Trahill, second, you call the vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grigo?